Or searchers, circers, however you want to pronounce it.
The Halloween store is in Roy.
Yeah, there's one in Roy as well.
I kept asking them, I'm like, can you guys see it? Because it's showing me that it's freaking.
But with how big ShopCo is, it should be pretty large for all of your needs if you need to get a hard bit of new equipment for the year.
It's gonna be a big year. It's on a Saturday, there's a full moon, and it's daylight saving, so there's an extra hour that night.
Yeah.
Sorry guys, it's working, we're good.
Sean?
Yes.
Is it working there in the council room?
Yes, it's working, sorry about that.
Alright, thank you. Add one question, Chief, on the doctor thing. How does this work with our inter-local agreement with South Ogden? Do they have their own trainer, doctor, or how does that work?
Yeah, they have Dr. Fredrickson right now. We talked about before utilizing Dr. Fredrickson as ours, but he's chose not to. He's already doing another medical control position for Farmington.
This gal sound like she's pretty good, so she's got a good back there.
Oh yeah, she can take care of herself.
She should be pretty good, yeah, it sounds like it. Any other questions on that for Chief Shaw? Move on next, consideration, this actually I have two considerations, open the Ritter Drive to two-way traffic at the west end following completion of the page two upgrade project. Mr. Douglas, do you have anything for this meeting?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything, you know, we're right close to finishing up the construction up there, hopefully within the next week or so. I think we're gonna pave one of the last driveways tomorrow, and we're just getting really close on that, so I'd just like a decision on what you'd like me to do with that. I think we can just discuss it in the main meeting.
Well, it's good, hopefully we can get a decision. Any other comments on this topic for this meeting? Okay, move on, any discretionary for this meeting? Okay, ever much adjourn the work session?
I'll move.
Second.
Counselor Mitchell, uh, second by Counselor Ellis, is that right? Okay, meetings adjourned. We got about ten minutes, so if you need to do something. Usually I have some things I can talk about and tell you about, but I really don't provide
Did you guys write any letters? Are you wanting to read it or are you wanting to?
I thought about it, but Randy wrote a good one, so.
Hey Roger, our chassis finally came.
It's there, huh?
Well, it's at the shop getting painted, but we're ninety days out, I think.
That'll be good.
Looks pretty good, for being a small, little, what Sean, what Steve would call an ugly ambulance.
Yeah, but way more functional.
I don't know if you saw the care stuff come through, there's a lot of potential opportunity there, so.
I did see that, I saw what you had on your list.
It's a list.
Yep, it's good stuff.
Did some research, everybody else is going that route too, so hopefully.
It's good. Any more fires?
Yeah, that big grass fire down in, uh, in the West Haven, it got into two structures and burned up an luckily empty tanker car on the railroad tracks. So, that one, that went into Davis County, we had a three alarm on it. But, other than that, it's been just normal grass fires and medicals.
Train started?
Uh, don't know yet. So, Roy's initially thought it was Rosie's, but now it's Rosie's. Her chief is happy.
Understandable.
Right?
Yeah.
He didn't even get paged to it, now he's gotta investigate it. Hey Mayor, did you see that email about the open house?
I did.
Okay.
I think I responded to her, like.
I hadn't looked at my email yet, but I'll just make sure that you saw it.
Unless I didn't hit send, so.
You probably did.
That's possible. Not too bad, I'd say, that's a great activity.
Now where do I get my corn dog?
Well, I'm gonna still make him show up for corn dogs, or.
Alright.
We'll just.
There you go. Some down the pawn shop last Friday. I already had my dinner. That's true, those are pretty big.
The last COVID report I have for Riverdale and Weaver County, it shows we have fifty-three total cases so far in Riverdale.
What's the petition you're saying, what's it for?
Well, since Ritter Drive got all that expansion and stuff, then Highland Drive needs something done.
Where's Highland Drive, where's that located?
Kind of up here on the terrace, everybody thinks that's part of the terrace, it's, you know where Danning's Dance Studio is? Right there.
Cherry Hill?
Cherry goes down, Highlands up.
Okay, I got you.
And they think it's a racetrack along there. This is what I'm running with this. People from sixty years ago, they were saying has tried to get something down the street.
Yeah, I grew up in the bottom of the terrace there, I'm sixty-three, I know exactly where you're talking. In fact, my son's the one listed, the home right there on the corner. It's the Polson team, just sold that house. Everything's selling fast. We had, we had seven offers in four hours. That's literally what we had. I didn't even get mine listed before, three offers, four offers.
Steve, have you heard anything from Noah? Yes, we're in final stages right now. I'll meet with you, maybe on Thursday update you on everything. We're going back and forth all day today, but we're getting really close now, so. We did get notice, it's their written notice of the lawsuit today, finally from the attorney on that, no, and the, may not know about this one, Roger, the shooting over in South Ogden. One of their officers shot a guy, but our guys were there, and so we've been listed as a defendant in that one, so. And I just received the notice on that today, their notice intent to sue us. Insurance companies aware, but I've been on the phone with them on that one too. Pick a number, stand in line. Yeah. The world we live in nowadays. You can't even be there, you're gonna get sued, you know?
That's what I noticed with all the police pass on, so I mentioned Chief, they're there to, it seems like, things are hostage responding, everybody fighting. All kinds of domestic violence, people out in the park, a lot of supermarkets. Boy, there's really a lot unrest, I don't know what's going on. I saw a news thing a couple hours ago, it said that some guy got hit by the gal in the car, snapped her, I think, I think it ended up with a death, whatever. It's just amazing what, uh, what we saw, it's really sad. They do a great job, and really, I know we all appreciate it. They do a fine job. Like, every few lines, it's attempted suicide, they put it in the hospital. Just, uh, the thing with, uh, problems like that for, for. Folks in worry.
Yeah, I worry about the long-range impact of this, too, I mean, it was getting to the point where it's hard to find good guys anyway, and now it's gonna be even worse, I'm afraid, so. Don't envy Chief Brinkman. I know he just smiles because he's getting close to that retirement day, the rest of this might still be his fault, it's not funny.
Take city council approval to retire, Chief. I don't know about that. Years, uh, years help, but there's still a final decision to make, there is. Now we're getting pretty close. Got five fifty-eight on my computer.
Hey Roger, are you showing some of those locks coming back?
Yeah, little facial hair coming, peach fuzz.
Every time you turn your head, I see it catching in the sun.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's coming in pretty white.
It looks rad to me, I think you're gonna have rad hair, Roger.
I have no hope, I'm just jealous.
Ditto.
I think I'll keep it off for a while. Take a razor to it.
How about your blood type, did it change?
Yeah, it did.
What'd you go from to, to?
Went from AB positive to O.
Wow. Wow.
So that changes your blood type?
Yes, it does.
That is crazy.
I have to, uh, get all my vaccinations in December, January again.
Wow.
It's a crazy process.
Like start over.
Yep. Been talking to a young man, he's twenty-four years old, married two months, and was just diagnosed with leukemia. He's down at Huntsman right now, going through the first stage, it's pretty rough on him. It's all up here.
Wow.
Good, a little entertainment. Hey, I have six o'clock, uh, I'd like to go ahead and call this city council meeting to order, usually August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. For the record, all city council members are present this evening, as are members of the staff. We also have members of the public that are joining us on YouTube, and understand, we also have some there in the city council room. And the special welcome to you, and glad that you're here with us this evening. I've asked Counselor Stevens if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please open your mics? Then please rise and repeat after me. My pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I know, yeah.
At this point, we take a moment in silence. Uh, some of you still got your lives, or didn't. Uh, take a moment in silence this evening, as we remember, in silence, as we remember our military, our, those who are serving here at home to protect our interests, our police, our firefighters, our medical, our healthcare people, those that are all involved in those things. I would like you to remember them, and also if you'd remember our city council this evening, as they make decisions that affect our community, they might make, uh, decisions that are best for those who reside in our shop and our community. We'll now take a moment in silence. Thank you very much. Okay, well, next move on to, uh, public comment. Uh, public comments, the time when you're able to address the city council, if any concerns or ideas that you might have. Uh, we would ask you to, uh, if you're, uh, there in the council room, to come forward to the microphone, state your name, and, uh, state, uh, what ideas or what concerns you might have, and would ask if you can, if you just keep it about three minutes. The time is yours, uh, one thing I'd mention, uh, we have the Ritter Drive, uh, as an agenda item tonight, we'll do that public comment, uh, before we talk about Ritter Drive, so if you're, if you're here for Ritter Drive, uh, we ask you to hold your comments, we'll give you time before, uh, before we talk about Ritter Drive. And Estenson was tabled in a previous meeting, so it'll have to be untabled, and, uh, if the council chooses to do that, then, uh, we'll go ahead and we'll do the public comment on Ritter Drive this evening. Anyone there for public comment, Shady?
Yes, hold on one moment. Hi, my name is Jaleen Cyrus, I live up on Highland Drive. The issue I have tonight is something needs to be done up there. You've spent a lot of money on the Ritter Drive episode, something's gotta be done up there, or you're gonna be ending up with the lawsuit, because somebody's gonna get hit, it's not when, or a matter of if, it's gonna be a matter of when. The cars now try to, the speed limit sign we have up there, they try to see how fast they can go. We are getting cars going fifty, we've seen the fifties, we know they're going faster than that. Something's gotta get done, and this isn't my first time even addressing this, this has been addressed for multiple years. Families that have been there for fifty, sixty years, have tried to get something done, and nobody wants to do anything. We're tired of being the orphan child up there, something's gotta be done. You guys wanna say anything? I got a couple of the other residents up there to voice opinions, too.
My name is Carrie Brown, and I live up on Highland Drive, I live on the corner where the curve is. I am very concerned about Highland Drive and the speed limit, and the traffic that goes through there. Um, I've lived there for almost sixteen years, and it has just increasingly gotten worse. Um, even over the last five years, it's gotten much worse. Somebody is going to get killed, it's going to happen, I know it. They're probably one night gonna come through my, corner of my house, right into my bedroom, because of the speeds that they are driving. I've had to stop or slow down myself, it's a very narrow road, you can barely get two cars passing, and then if you've got people parked on the sides, which has also been an issue, then you're really in trouble, because somebody's gonna have to stop to allow those cars to go through, and it's, it's ridiculous, it's very unsafe, and the city needs to do something to fix the problem, because they're gonna be in trouble if they don't. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Maureen Williams, I live at four eighteen Highland Drive, and, um, my issue is that because there's no parking strip and there's no sidewalk, in order for us to maintain the lawn, uh, at the front of our street, or excuse me, at the front of our yard, it's right, butts up to the street, so we have to be in the street, we have to stand in the street to mow, edge, blow off our street, you know, or, you know, keep the, keep the grass looking nice, we have to stand in the street. And just yesterday, or the day before, I believe, our neighbor was standing in the street, edging his lawn, blowing it, a car flew by at forty-five miles an hour, nearly clipped him, I mean, literally was a foot away from him. I mean, we have to, we have to risk our lives to mow the, to mow the front yard, that's kinda ridiculous, but, um, we did sign, bring in a petition, and all of our neighbors on that street signed it, but it, it just seems crazy, we even have, one side of the street is, there's a no parking sign that says you're not supposed to park, but it never gets enforced. I mean, if I see a policeman once a month drive down my street, I'd be surprised. Nobody ever comes up there, nobody even knows it's Riverdale, we never have anybody patrol there, we've offered, you can sit in my driveway and run the radar, you can, I'll paint you a spot, free and clear, you can do whatever, but nobody ever comes up there, and it, I mean, even if you painted it, we've asked to paint this side of the street red, put a speed bump, put a street light, there's an excuse for every single thing we've asked for. I mean, what, what can we do? There's, it's, it's just getting scary, dogs get hit, I know, I'm, I'm waiting for a kid to get hit, I mean, people almost get hit all the time, we have to walk in the street, you can't even walk around the block, unless you're in the middle of the street, because there's, if there's cars on each side, only one car can fit down the middle, so it's, it's pretty dangerous, so, please, listen to what we say, thanks.
Can, can we get her first name, I, I missed it.
Maureen, M-A-U-R-E-E-N.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all of them, Shady?
Yes, sir, that's all I have in here, and I don't have any emails or nothing on YouTube either.
Okay, super good. Uh, let's have them leave that petition with you, Shady, and, uh, we'll talk with, about that with the city staff, we're also like, as far as having a, on a later city council meeting, where that's on the agenda, we're not able to discuss that tonight, I've noticed, so, uh, if you'd have them do that, we appreciate you being here. Uh, I know there's been issues up there, I know it's been like that in the past, but it sounds like things are still, they're really not good, we're sorry, apologize for that, so, we'll take a look, and, uh, we'll get back with you on that, which, you know, what's going on, so, thanks for, thanks for being here and sharing your concerns with us.
Mayor, I had a question on that, I'm not sure if one of these individuals was the one who submitted the petition, but i- as I thought that they had asked Shady they wanted that red, did that cover all their comments? Or was there more to it than just, uh, that was my concern, is if somebody else wanted that red and they weren't there, so.
Let me grab it, hold on one second.
On your petition, was there anything else regarding design speeding that you'd wanna read to them?
Why don't you read it, Shady?
Well, because most of the traffic isn't even our street residents, they're coming from the terrace.
Sorry, trying to grab it, I have a ton of letters. You want me just to read it to you? Okay, so this is the petition that I received today, I can just read it to you if that helps. Okay, let's see, this petition is the same as a previous one submitted, the council to close Ritter Drive, the citizens for a safe, sorry, this one cut me off. Okay, the citizens for a safe Highland Drive submit this letter with signatures here to, in effort to show the local and surrounding communities support to close Highland Drive to local traffic only, and request that the council consider and visit our situation, which is much more needed, imposes a much more greater risk to life and property than even Ritter Drive. We respectfully request that the Riverdale City Council place this action on their agenda and configure Highland Drive in a manner that provides safety and security to those who live on or visit the area for the following reasons. Highland Drive provides an access, an exit to the upper part of the terrace for many people who are not Riverdale residents, but who want to avoid the traffic control device at three hundred west and forty-five twenty south, forty-five twenty-five south. Highland Drive has topography issues that adds difficulty with the curvature, a full ninety-degree turn on the west end, and large deep and turning dip onto the east end of the road. These are both dangerous year-round, but especially in the winter with slick roads. Highland Drive has a difficult line of sight, issues where residents have only a few seconds to see oncoming traffic as they exit their driveways, making backing out of driveways virtually impossible. Highland Drive is very narrow in comparison to other roads in Riverdale, especially Ritter Drive, now with even greater width, curbs, sidewalks, and et cetera. In addition, parking is only allowed on one side of the street, even further limiting space and visibility. Highland Drive has had a long history of excess speed with much higher than posted speed limit. Highland Drive has never been improved, and has a number of safety, safety issues toward the east end of Highland Drive, people use the dip as a carnival ride and explode up the other side on a regular basis. Highland Drive allows many non-resident travelers an option to bypass the traffic control device located near the funnel tra- funnels traffic through residential area. Highland has little, if any, lights, making it practically dark and even less safe. And then, your signatures.
And so they actually would like to close it off, too, right?
Yep, that's what it sounds like.
Let us take a local talk with the staff, it looks like they want it to be entertained by the city council, so.
I think, didn't it say something about closing it off to only local traffic, though? Not actually closing it off, but just to local traffic.
I just said, I thought it said just through traffic, but I can reread it, I don't know.
It, it's not on the agenda, so we'd have to bring it up in a separate meeting to discuss it further if you wanted, anyway, it's just a public comment.
Wouldn't that go to the risk management committee? About the city council?
Yeah, I guess it depends on what part, Alan, if, to close it, probably not, to discuss speed, yeah, that's what we've done traditionally, but.
Okay.
Closing it, I don't know that that's something we generally turn it over to risk management, so. But speeding, if that's the council's directive, again, we can't make a decision on it one way or another tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but that's something the risk management could look at.
So we have them look at it, should we schedule it for a city council meeting in the future? You wanna see what the risk management committee comes up with, what their recommendations are?
I, I think administratively we could handle that, at least to see if, you know, what, what issues are all there, and then maybe bring that, get that on a, on an agenda item where the full council can be completely informed, and then make decisions from there, get a little bit more direction.
Mayor, I, I think that it would be great to have the risk management committee look at it, so you have, you know, the, all the chiefs look, you know, look at it to see what it entails, you know, e- everybody that's on that, the risk management, just get their opinion, if they take a look at it, and then we would have more information as we look at it as well.
Yeah, I think that's what they would do, so that's good, good, good idea, Alan.
I think it'll give us a chance to go take a look at it, too. Is there a, a speed limit sign up there that flashes your, your speed, do we know?
Yeah.
Right, there is one up there.
Yeah, they just told me it's eastbound, not westbound, but yes, there is one up there.
Just so everybody's aware, those speed limit signs are that, I mean, they gather information, speeds and quantity of cars and things like that. They really don't, they only work one direction. So if you're headed the other direction, you don't get um, any information on the car. You don't get a speed or a count.
Okay, any other comments on that? Anybody else for public comment? Looks like we're, we're past uh, gonna move on next to presentations and reports, mayor's report. The only thing that I have was touched on a little bit in the work session and that's uh, Mr. Wervin was, received doctors, okay to come back to work on Thursday? I think most of you know and, but he was diagnosed a few months ago with acute myeloid leukemia. Uh, he's really been, been through a lot. Uh, they had a bone marrow transplant recently and we're just glad he's doing what he's doing because he's done really well. There's been a lot of prayers been answered and, you know, the doctors are praised, his numbers are good and they're real excited about how he's doing. We are too, Roger. Uh, we do look forward to having you back with us for mission. You're a vital part in what we do here, your background, your knowledge, the things that you know about, you know, city administrators, very, very important. We'll welcome you back. I know you've been in the interior city and I appreciate your counsel and advice and be glad to see you back in the office and take on your future, so. We wish you the very best and you continue working through this and just know everything right now is headed your way, so we're glad for that, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we move on, council committee assignment reports? Is there anything from the council on the committees they love to bring up in this meeting? Mr. Ellis?
There's still no cases of West Nile virus in Utah. So we're doing a good job with mosquito control.
That's great. I just read that they found it, found it in some mosquitoes, but the mosquitoes haven't, I guess, been there.
Yeah, there's not human cases yet.
That's great.
It's all COVID this year.
Okay, move on, city administration report, Mr. Brooks.
Okay, um, again, department reports in there. Um, again, I don't think there's anything really new. You know, I always enjoy looking at the police one and had a chance to talk to Scott this week. Am I on mute? Are we good? But anyway, it, you know, it's, it's concerning a little bit, just as we talked briefly about this earlier, just the state of our community and, and what's going on. I think Scott mentioned that the sexual assaults in Weaver County are just skyrocketing. And we had a couple crazy ones here just recently in Riverdale, so. Um, be aware, make sure you let your daughters and your wives know to be on their toes. Don't be taking any chances. It seems to uh, be prevalent in all the societies anymore that things are getting loose, even though they're not. Uh, it's a little bit scary when you see these things going on, but when you read their report, I mean, it's just fascinating the, the amount of stuff that they, they see and they go through. So that, I kind of look forward to that every month to look at it. Um, does anybody have any specific comments or questions? We have all the department's heads here if you need to ask them anything specific to their department.
I had one. Um, I just wanted to thank Chief Sholly. I know the police, each, each month, they always get all the, you know, the attention because theirs is so fun to read, but uh, you know, he really put in the extra effort this last month with the fire suppression and kind of a PR effort. I know in my neighborhood, he was concerned about maybe having to shut down the fireworks and instead he just kind of put kind of a boots-on-the-ground type approach. I saw him driving past my house a few times and, and uh, my neighbor is kind of weird. My side of the street is closed, but my neighbors across the street can light fireworks and uh, I, I just know he was down there, he was visible and, and uh, I think we made it through a real dangerous year uh, with, you know, pretty much unscathed. So I, I think they did a great job in the fire department.
Yeah, I echo that too. We had a, a meeting with the city administrators and fire chiefs and stuff here just recently and the word that I think they used to describe Chief Sholly was passionate. I don't think he gets any better than that, so. It seemed right to the T. I thought that was perfect, but.
Shit, you're not saying all the other words they called me.
That's the only one I remember, Jared, so we're good. As far as uh.
Hey Steve?
Yes?
I, I wanted to give a shout out to Sean Douglas too. Um, as, as you guys know, my wife can be very particular about things. She sees things in the, the city and, and she just doesn't let them go. She, she, you know, graffiti and things like that around the city, you know, she wants our city to look great. And uh, she's been working with Sean on the roundabouts behind Sam's Club and um, we got a letter from Janet Young, uh, last meeting. But Sean, Sean has worked with my wife as a resident, um, kind of on a mini committee for those roundabouts and they're, they're awesome. I mean, they're, they're not even, they're not even good. They're, they're beyond good. They're, they're flat out awesome. They came in under budget. Um, just super nice, so, good job, Sean.
I agree. I agree and, you know, we can say that about all of our departments. They're just nothing but superb individuals and Sean um, is part of what we're working on some of those things up on the hill. Um, we need to change some fence stuff around and he had sought out some bids and most of these guys, where it's the prime of their season, are out four to six weeks. And I just said, oh, Sean, help me out here, man. I'm in trouble. We gotta do it quicker and that kind of thing. And the next weekend, these guys are up there doing it themselves, so. Um, just no questions asked. They just get the job done. You rarely hear anything negative come from them, so, yeah, my hat's off to all of them, so. Nice to know. All of our departments do excellent jobs and I know Roger can echo that. There's, they make this job easy. We just kind of nod and let them do their thing, so. Um, anyway, as far as uh, our staffing authorizations, we're at or below anything. We've been really careful about that and probably will be for a while until we understand our financial situation a little bit better. Um, I don't see that changing. Uh, employee recognitions, just a couple of them I wanted to uh, recognize tonight from those two departments. Dean Gallegos now has twenty-five years with us. Uh, Norm Pharoah and Bart Paul, uh, both sitting at twenty-two. So two, two just highly, just excellent individuals. I don't know that you meet finer men than those two there. If you ever need anything done, it's done immediately, almost before you can finish getting your words out, so. Hats off and recognition, recognition to those guys. Um, I don't know that I have anything else. Mike, on your community development report, did you have anything you wanted to add on that part?
Well, it's all pretty much the same as it kind of has been, but there's some new things hopefully on the horizon, so. Look forward to adding some stuff to it shortly.
I think that about sums it up, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Brooks? Move on next to the consent items, uh, consent item, consideration approved the meeting minutes from Office Four, two thousand twenty, the city council work session and also the city council regular session on the same date. We have any changes or corrections to the minutes? With that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Mitchell, uh, second by Mr. Ellis. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous in favor, thank you. We'll move on next to action item one. This is consideration of resolution twenty twenty dash eighteen. Improve a new contract between Riverdale City and Dr. Summer Grace to serve as a medical director slash advisor to the Riverdale City Fire Department. Chief Sholly.
Thanks, Mayor. So we're just required by the state of Utah to maintain a medical control physician, uh, both for our DEA license to carry medications and also as someone who can QA our medicals and help us with policies and procedures. Dr. Sill became a little too busy in his other obligations and Dr. Grace is happy to come help us. I'm pretty excited. She's very progressive. She's got some EMS background and she works at locally ours.
Okay, any questions for the chief?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Alan.
I would move to approve this resolution as stated within the packet.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion, uh, Mr. Arnold, the second was, is that you, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Eldon, uh, second by Steve Eldon. Uh, do you have any discussion on the motion? Uh, Ms. Evans, would you bow with counsel please on the resolution?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you. Uh, we'll move on next to correction item two. Sounds like we've got some things uncovered. Consideration open Ritter Drive to deal with traffic west end following Litchell Base Two upgrade project. Uh, this same agenda item was on the uh, council agenda here two and a half, three months ago. Uh, at the time the city council, uh, tabled the item and uh, in order to discuss that and talk about it, make any decisions this evening, uh, it will have to be untabled. We have a motion to untable the agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell and who's the second?
Mr. Hilton.
Mr. Hilton. Can't see you. I've got a little thing on my screen here.
That's a gift.
And you're not there. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor, untabled the item? Uh, next, we'll have a public comment. Uh, we do have, apparently we probably should let them go first, but they just, they, uh, Shelly. Uh, maybe you'd look at that. After that will be the letters.
Okay, sounds good. Um, is everybody muted? Because I'm getting a lot of feedback over here. I could barely understand what you were saying, Mayor. So we're gonna start a public comment in here?
Right.
Okay, perfect. I'm reading the letters after. So if whoever wants to come up Ritter Drive, you can just address them.
Just if you'd state your name, please, and uh, try to keep it to three minutes if you want.
My name's Randy Paulson. I live up on the south side of uh, Ritter Drive. Been a resident for thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight years. And I'm all in favor of opening Ritter Drive both directions. Um, I understood years ago when it was a single, like they're going through now, uh, not to have it open uh, for the safety concerns, but now they've spent thousands, millions of dollars of tax money to widen the roads, to put in the infrastructure, sidewalks, curb and gutter. It looks beautiful to everybody that's done that. I feel it's safe as any other city, uh, in any other uh, location. Uh, as a real estate agent, I travel a lot of the cities and this road to me is top-notch compared to some roads. It's already being used as two lanes and for me now, there's no reason to have it closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Yes, I'm Jim Owens. I also live just south of Ritter Drive. I've only been here a little over four years, four and a half years. And with the improvements that I am very glad to see, I believe that Ritter Drive can safely be opened both directions. The concern that I've heard is that people will be going too fast along Ritter Drive, especially westbound going down the hill. As I was coming home tonight, I deliberately paid attention to the mo, my speed as I came off of fifteen fifty onto Ritter Drive, heading eastbound. And at fifteen miles an hour, I took my foot off the accelerator and my vehicle still tried to accelerate beyond the twenty-five miles an hour before I got to twelve hundred west where I would turn. I think with just additional traffic enforcement there and signage and if necessary, the possibility of adding one speed bump to the west of fifteen fifty, it could be controlled. I don't think that even in icy conditions, uh, having it only one-way east, westbound, excuse me, one-way westbound will create any greater safety than having it both ways. And so I encourage and hope that it will be opened both directions. It will make things much easier to access our neighborhood when you're coming from the north, or south, excuse me.
Thank you, Jim.
Respectfully, Mayor, I'm Josie Torres and I live actually on Ritter Drive. And I'm still here, um, trying to keep Ritter Drive closed, going the one way. You threw a lot of money at that road and it sure needed it. It needed it for a long time. My son had to, I had to drive him to school throughout his old grade schools. By the time junior high came around, uh, we still didn't have sidewalks. We didn't have anything. I think you pretty much ashamed any neighbor to come up and say anything. It is absolutely gorgeous. It is a beautiful road, but it doesn't eliminate the fact that when you come up that hill, and I come home every day from work, uh, that sun is in your eyes. And when I go to turn in my driveway, which is fourteen ninety-seven Ritter Drive, I cannot see a vehicle coming at forty, fifty miles an hour coming off of uh, Parkway Drive because they will take that illegally every time. And when they do it, they go faster than they need to because they know they're going illegally. I have grandchildren. I have nieces. I have nephews. Um, there's been plenty of kids that just moved in. It is widened the road. It is given a good sidewalk, but we have had way more people walking down there. We've had way more children on the road with their bikes on the sidewalk. So I don't understand, yeah, you're right. It is beautiful. It is wider. And you can probably get now two, two-way traffic going through there, but it's not gonna eliminate the fact that there's still the sun there. There's still the hill there. You can't change that. You can't change the fact that the speed coming in from Parkway Drive is gonna do what they're doing. So, yeah, yeah, I think my neighbors really love the road and I think I really appreciate the fact that they finally did that. Now, after my son now has been graduated now in college. But for the ten, what, fourteen years now that we've been there, we'd never had it before, but the danger still has not changed. So opening up both ways, I can see it still continuing the same way, but both ways, there will definitely be, and I, I understand your plights, lady. We went, we dealt with it, so I understand your plights. So I, I, I ask and I pray that they don't open it and I'm the sole one here. So, like I said, you've shamed my neighbors to come out because they love their, their driveways. They love their retaining walls. I mean, I can't, I can't complain about it, but it doesn't change the fact of the safety. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Josie.
All right, I think that's all I have right now. I don't have anybody else in here. So I have letters and I haven't received any more emails. So if you want me to go ahead and start reading letters, I can.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. And then Rich is gonna read half of them for me cause I have a ton. So this one is from Dave Squires. To whom it may concern, people who are driving on Freeway Park Drive wanting to get to ten fifty west, Target, Sam's Club, Walmart and et cetera, cannot turn on West Ritter because of the one-way do not enter. So they go to Larry H. Miller on fifteen hundred west and proceed to fifty-one seventy-five south and drive down through our, through our residential area quite fast many times where there are many children on bicycles and scooters playing all day long are put in great danger from all this traffic. I believe Ritter Drive should be reopened to two-way traffic at the west end, making it much easier and much safer to proceed to ten fifty west. Thank you for your consideration. Dave Squires.
My kids or their kids? Which one is it?
It just says Dave. I'm not sure. Let's see. Alright, this one is from Wanda Knight. I would like to voice my opinion to the limited access to Ritter Drive from the frontage road. I understand that many years ago, going east was blocked because the road was narrow and no sidewalks. Although everyone on Ritter Drive could go both east and west, once you found access to Ritter Drive, and she has parentheses, isn't it interesting that this little country road had been a two-way road for years without any problems? Because of the limited access, I have noticed that traffic changed from a straight route east on Ritter to ten fifty west to a division through the subdivision. The traffic now goes on to fifteen hundred west by the car dealership through the subdivision and then past the Coleman Farm, then onto Ritter Drive. Directing traffic through two subdivisions to gain access to Ritter Drive is dangerous and not necessary. Going on Riverdale Road would be crazy if there is another way. A year ago, the city put out a bid to improve Ritter Drive. In this bid, it indicated once the road was widened, cub and gutters added, the road would be a two-way access road. The city council approved the bid over a million dollars. The, okay, the money to do this repair, money to do these repairs came from a class C fund, which I understand is used to improve public roads. This money is for our tax money. This road is a public road and should, we should all have access to it. To think Ritter Drive should be a private road with limited access is wrong. Now that the road is finished, I have heard that there is petition going around started by one of the city councilmen. He wants the road to be a one-way street. What, what way did they want as one-way? Eastbound or westbound? Maybe the city councilman wanted it to say limited access, meaning you can't access their road from the frontage road. But once you get on Ritter Drive, you can either, you can go either way. This is not fair to the taxpayers that paid their taxes to be denied access from the frontage road onto Ritter Drive. Also, I understand they don't want the traffic on their road because of the danger to children. We'll look at other roads in Riverdale, forty-four hundred, eleven fifty, Coles Lane. If we started limited access because of traffic, we would close all the roads in Riverdale. This is a growing city and we need to work together to improve the traffic, not hinder it. That's from Wanda. Okay, this is from-
Mayor, if I could say something, I think we've lost Brent. Maybe we can hold up a minute?
Okay.
Hold up.
I'm not sure that I have a contact on him. Shaili, do you have a phone number or something on? Steve, I just sent it to you.
Okay.
So on my list, I have everybody but Brent, of course. So does anybody have his phone number? If not, I can go upstairs and try to find it.
I have it.
Okay.
I've got it.
I've tried his cell phone. He didn't answer. Now I'm trying the home phone.
Oh yeah, I've got a message from him. I'm locked up, no.
Mayor, if we still have a quorum, we could still, uh, continue on with the letters and things. Just a thought. Well, the cities are gonna be forced to get Utopia if this is how we're gonna have to meet from now on, I guess.
I got him here on his cell phone, Steve.
Alright, I've sent him a couple invites. I've got him too, but if you wanna just go on that one, I'll keep trying to log into him somehow.
Why don't you go ahead, Shaila, and keep reading that.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, this one is from Camille Jacobson. Hi Mayor, I am writing to you in regards to the Ritter Drive project. I would like to see that road be open to the public. It is startling to know the amount of funding that has gone into this project, yet the lack of access and/or usage it provides to the public. I have the expectation that this project would be more beneficial in bringing about an improved road access to the public. As a neighboring citizen near Ritter Drive, I have witnessed firsthand the congestion that occurs due to closing the road off, especially with the adding of Coleman Farm subdivision and the business along fifty-one seventy-five south. Through opening up this road, it would create a better flow of traffic, ensure a reduction of traffic located on fifteen hundred west, and overall improve the city's access to frequently used roads. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this matter. Alright, this one is from Jenny Schwab. Hello, Norm. I was given your email and was told that I could express my opinion to, to you both on reopening Ritter Drive in a two-way direction. I would like to, I would like you to first know that we have loved doing business in this city. We love it here and feel like our input is maybe a little more direct than others as our business building is literally on the north end of Ritter Drive. As a business, we have many employees coming and going from our shop's location and I feel it is more dangerous to have our employees trying to turn left down fifteen hundred west across, dealing with essentially four lanes of traffic, busy traffic that it would be, that it would be to exit left on a freeway park drive and exiting Ritter as it only has two lanes there. We did have an incident in the winter with one of our vehicles getting hit while trying to exit down fifteen hundred west. So I would suggest as a business owner in the area, that opening Ritter, Ritter Drive up would be, would give people a secondary option that could be safer for them to exit from. I would like to keep my, my employees and vehicles as safe as possible in this situation. I have heard that the homeowners on Ritter Drive have been frustrated with the speed that people drive on that road. I assure you, we have always been respectful with that situation. I would like to suggest, has the city ever thought about the possibility of putting in a roundabout at the bottom of Ritter or Freeway Park Drive? I know at the current moment, there is not enough land, but that could be a feasible option that could slow down the traffic but also reopen Ritter. Either way, we would like to see it reopened, please. I thank you for your time and consideration as a business owner in your city. Respectfully, Jennifer. Alright, this one is from Zach Ruzi. After listening to the city council meeting tonight, I feel I need to make my voice heard. My voice should matter as a lifelong citizen of Riverdale just as much as anyone else. My elderly parents live on fifty-five twenty-five south and after having had, after having to had to drive all over the area to buy them groceries, not having Ritter Drive open was not only inconvenient but dangerous. The intersection at fifteen hundred west and Freeway Park Drive needs some serious attention if you expect people to use that. Try navigating that intersection on a busy Saturday or any day around three P M. Turning off Riverdale Road onto Freeway Park Drive has a straight arrow and left arrow pointed on the road only to be followed by a left turn, a left turn arrow only ten feet later. The right lane just disappears. I assume you were supposed to merge, but the street paintings make it confusing. The curves of the intersection make it difficult to navigate. Turning left from fifteen hundred west onto Freeway Park Drive is far worse than anything I've ever experienced on Ritter. Since you can drive down the street onto fifteen hundred west and go up to Ritter means only a handful of residents at the top of Ritter, Ritter benefit. Trying to get up into the part of Riverdale is near impossible. What happens if the ambulance needs to go to my parents? As a taxpayer, finish Ritter and open it both ways. It sounds like it's, has already been paid for. Don't put ugly barriers in the road, just open it. Otherwise, you have spent more money to fix fifteen hundred west at Freeway Park Drive, not to mention the precedent that this is how set. I can name three intersections off the top of my head I would like closed for residents only. If you want to keep it closed, then place a stop sign on eastbound Ritter at fifteen hundred west and make it fifteen hundred west through, through the street, uh, through street, sorry. Fifteen hundred west at Ritter is near a blind intersection and since no one can come down Ritter east except for residents, that side should have a stop sign. That's from Zach. Alright. This one is from Josh Yates. At earlier stage in our due diligence when acquiring and planning our assisted living development on the two acre parcel just east of the frontage road, Freeway Park Drive on the north side of Ritter Drive, which later expanded to two phases on six acres, we addressed the issue of the one-way access from the frontage road onto Ritter Drive as we did not view it as beneficial to our development. The city staff officials explained to us that it was for the safety and other reasons connected to the unfinished portion of north side of Ritter Drive on that corner and that once it is completed with the sidewalk and et cetera, that the restriction would be removed. This understanding was paramount to our decision to move forward with this development because we viewed the value of the property being very much affected by the flow of traffic. With these understandings, we eventually acquired the land with the understanding that there would be no complications with traffic flow and ease of ingress and egress. We have believed and represented to our partners and others to the public that this restriction was temporary and would be removed. To hear that that, to hear that there is a possibility that this is not the case is a significant cause for concern to us. Our project spans nearly the entire portion of the north side of Ritter Drive from the frontage road to fifteen hundred west, thus causing our development to experience the greatest effects from this decision. Now that the construction along this portion of Ritter Drive is basically complete, we would urge the city to hold to the representations made to our group who will be most impacted by this outcome. Furthermore, it doesn't seem to make much sense to leave this intersection a one directional entry point just to reduce traffic from the frontage road to fifteen hundred west. A small stretch of road for the benefit of handful of residents who themselves would benefit from having an additional option of ingress to their properties from, to the, from the frontage road. To maintain this access restricted to egress only seems to favor a select few along that short stretch. Our restriction ease of flow to the greater populace of residents and it is something that municipalities are in the business of doing and is not something often done anymore. We respectfully submit these comments and hope for the greatest amount of courage and wisdom in this matter. We also express our gratitude to the city officials, city officials who have been exceptionally fair and reasonable in our dealings and in the challenges we have faced with our project. So that's from Josh. Okay, this is from Max and Moana Patterson. They say, we would like to see Ritter Drive open it, opened up. It would be more convenient. This one is from Laura Strong. We would like to see Ritter Drive stay one-way only with through traffic going west. And this one is from Cody Hanson. Do you still want me to read it, Mayor, since he emailed everybody or do you just, I can still read it for the record?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Hello, Council. I hope you are all doing well. I want you to know that I appreciate the challenges you've been dealing with over the past several months. Thank you for your willingness to consider the inconvenient circumstances openly and make tough, sometimes unpopular decisions. The purpose of this email, though, is to voice my concern over an easy decision that has apparently evolved into a tough one. Being a member of the city council who approved the expedition, I cannot talk, sorry guys, of public money for the improvements to Ritter Drive, I feel like my opinion on this matter at hand has at least little merit. I have been trying to think of a simple and brief way to explain my stance on this and basically it comes down to this. I sincerely believe that the five of us at the time agreed that the commitment to spend the money for the sake of traffic and pedestrian safety on Ritter Drive would eventually lead to the reopening of two-way traffic. The safety of Ritter Drive has always been a concern of multiple elected officials who have lived on or near Ritter Drive. And there has been a very vocal, there's been very vocal advocates for improving this roadway for many years. I remember specific conversations with more than one of these officials who would say, when the topic of two-way traffic on Ritter would come up, okay, but the road has to be improved first. The thing is, for many years, it was thought to be just too expensive, but we found out one year that maybe it isn't quite as bad as we all thought. With the additional tax revenue set aside for road improvements and the assistance of new developments in the area, it all came together pretty nicely and maybe unexpectedly to some. In my opinion, the mindset that these improvements might never happen, or at least not for a long time, combined with the area residents become accustomed to the way, I, become accustomed to the, I, to the one-way, sorry, status over the years and the upset vocal minority has given some people foggy memory and/or soft spines. Riverdale is not a country road town and hasn't been for decades. We have been a city of strong commercial growth since long before homes came to Coleman Farms, even for some time before homes sat on thirteen forty-five. One of the trade-offs for the great conveniences and revenues that our commerce provides is increased traffic. I've been in my home since nineteen seventy-nine and until the early nineteen nineties, there was pretty much zero through traffic. When the first Walmart development was built, ten twenty-five west became the pass-through from forty-four hundred south to Riverdale Road and traffic has increased many, many times over. Would you tell me that Ritter Drive area residents deserve more consideration than ten twenty-five west residents? I certainly hope not. If you allow the now descendants to pressure you into the bait and switch on, to switch on the rest of the city's residents after spending our money on what is now a beautiful and safe road, I will be greatly disappointed. I will also expect planning to begin on reconstruction of ten twenty-five west and the closure of access to Riverdale Road from there. By the way, the newly refurbished roundabouts are looking really nice. Great job to all involved. Thank you for your time and consideration. Cody Hanson.
Thank you. The reason I had that read, I know the council members have read it. There's department heads that have it. We've got a lot of public, I think, listening.
Yeah.
I think it's important to hear.
And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. The last one I have is from Travis Story. He says, hi, I just wanted to email and write that I'd like Ritter Drive to go back to two-way street. Thanks for all the improvements. Travis.
Mayor, I, I have quite a few. Um, this one is from Kristen Arnold and it reads, dear Mayor Cyril and Council, I'd like to out, ask the council to seriously consider the needs and concerns of the residents on the south side of Riverdale Road when considering the Ritter Drive situation. of the residents on the south side of Riverdale Road when considering the Ritter Drive situation. The majority of the council and mayor do not live on the south side of the city. Many of you aren't familiar with Ritter Drive, nor do you traverse the road on a regular basis. I know this issue has given the opportunity for some to travel to the area for a minute or two. However, visiting the road occasionally does not make one an expert in the speeds at which people traverse, nor does it illustrate the number of vehicles which are to use the road day and night. To appease some residents for the time being, this issue has initiated the city to install speed monitors near the middle of Ritter Drive recently in order to compile data in an effort to monitor speeds of motorists going up and down the road. It's been argued the placement of the speed monitors isn't ideal because motorists are slowing down to turn on 1345 West in one direction and 1500 West in another direction, skewing the data to show slower speeds. It, it seems there's been little consideration for those that are heavily impacted by the idea of reopening of the road and lots of consideration for those that may use the road as a shortcut to bypass Riverdale Road to avoid traffic. I fail to understand Riverdale City's goal to do so when ourselves' tax revenues generated from businesses on Riverdale Road. When compared to Leighton and other cities, Riverdale Road traffic is much less condensed and more manageable than any of those in Davis County. UDOT has maintained the road and why we wouldn't encourage traffic out onto a main thoroughfare to solicit our business is beyond me. The Coleman property has recently been developed. This development brought much needed improvements to Ritter Drive. However, these improvements were not designed to bring an influx of mass numbers of vehicles creating an expressway for folks to traverse from Roy to South Weaver. These are neighborhoods with families and children who choose not to live on busy byways. It's irresponsible for the mayor and council to arbitrarily open a road without the, the thought to the impact of the residents. As an example, just yesterday, as I was coming off of 1500 West to turn east on Ritter, a bicycle cyclist headed from Freeway Park ignoring the road close sign sped past the speed monitor at 47 miles an hour. There's been a large number of residents on the south side of Riverdale who have submitted over 300 names to the city who have largely been, who have been largely ignored by the mayor and the majority of the council on this issue. Names that have voted for these individuals who, who were promised that they would be heard. It seems now that it's a matter of pride and the mayor just wants it done. However, because the mayor's grandson lives on 1500 West, he's willing to change his speed limit on that road is consolidation and still wants Ritter Drive open. Again, it's irresponsible to ignore the large number of residents. I urge you to reconsider this decision and keep your promises. And then I've got, I've got a text and, um, I don't have a name, so I'm gonna try to get a name before I read the text. Um, so I'll go onto some more emails. Alright, this is from Rudy Jones. You need to keep Ritter, Ritter Drive open both ways. It's ridiculous to have a one-way and not an option to come the other way. Um, 1124 West, 5575 South. This is from Kim Evans. It says, I'm a south side resident of Riverdale. I've lived in Riverdale all of my life. I believe since our taxpayer money was used to widen the road on Ritter Drive and sidewalks were put in to make it safer for this road to no longer be a one-way road. Traffic has increased in our area due to the schools and increasing number of businesses in our area. Opening Ritter Drive both ways will give another outlet, especially at the busy times of day when pulling left onto the frontage road from 1500 gets extremely difficult, considering Riverdale Road also feeds onto 1500. And this is from Rand Mills. Says, Mr. Searle, good evening. I find that the topic of Ritter Drive and whether it should be opened back up to two-way traffic is a preheated discussion among citizens, so much so that a couple of citizens have been pushing people to use their voice and email you telling you why it should be opened to two-way again. As a resident that lives right next to Ritter Drive, I feel that this would prove to be a big mistake. It's not the right thing to do for the residents who would be the ones dealing with this on a daily basis. I've heard the arguments for it and truthfully, they don't seem to hold much water. Development is inevitable. My, that's in quotes. My thought, sure, but even with the new developments, we haven't seen enough of an increase in traffic to legitimize making a two-way. A lot of money was spent to make improvements so that a roundabout could be put in and to open the road back up to accommodate more traffic. My thoughts, you think the traffic is unmanageable for the area now? Try adding a roundabout that will be completely clogged when the driving is going. Once COVID-19 is an impulse swing and they are busy again. And prevent all the residents here from going anywhere unless we go all the way through the neighborhood. Try maybe making Ritter a two-way and welcome anyone leaving base to come through the neighborhood again and clog things up even worse. This would be a perfect storm. A roundabout would assist with traffic flow and prevent accidents. This is a high accident area. My thoughts, we lived here for four plus years and I've never seen an accident. It's the greater good for the residents and they're, and they need, there and need to quit whining. My thoughts, if you lived here, it would make sense to you why this isn't fair for the greater good. There's just no logical argument for making the road two-way again. Frankly, the roundabout as stated above is a waste of tax dollars and will not make things better for our residents. What it will do is create a nightmare for us when the movie patrons clog it. Unless people there, live there, they don't see this for what it is and what it would be. I appreciate your consideration of my thoughts on this matter and best wishes. The next letter is from Judy Nelson. Says, this is Mike and Judy Nelson. We live at 1211 West, 5050 South, Riverdale. We pay our taxes and we'd really like to be able to use the two-way Ritter Drive. Before it was made one-way, we use that route all the time. Thanks for your consideration. Scott Smith. I live at 5548 South, 1100 West, about a block south of Ritter Drive.